I'd like to call to order the December 10, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer? Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIB reports and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to convene to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Sorry, I thought I heard one over there.
You probably did.
I thought I did.
Can I use your mic, Judy?
Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as one.
Okay. Linda, we don't have any communications on the agenda, and I don't think we've had anything else, have we?
No.
Okay. All ready, and then on the agenda next, we have the approval of the minutes from the public workshop and executive session meetings from November 12 and the regular public and executive session meetings on November 19. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about those? Nope, okay. Hello, lovely students.
Hi.
Hello, how are you both?
All right.
Your turn.
One sec. My laptop's low.
Uh-oh. Do we need to stall? Do we need like a little theme music or something?
Please, no. So, for Irving School, the PTO-sponsored book fair was very successful. They hosted an evening-
Did you say bug fair?
Book.
Oh, I was like, wait. I want to go to the bug fair, though. That sounds great.
So they hosted an evening shopping night and really took the enchanted forest theme to a whole new level with fairy wings, gnomes, a spirit week, and a photo spot, thanks to all those attended and offered support. Operation Snowflake has been very busy, and we are thankful to all who have shopped, wrapped, and donated gifts to our local family in need. And our teachers recently had a refresher on administering reading/reading records and a PE on guided reading. The supervisors are continuing to work with the staff on benchmarking during the common planning. And for the Bardo School, one sec. Okay, so there was a Thanksgiving food drive, and the PTO raised approximately $1,200 in food and money to provide for Bardo families in need. There's also Operation Snowflake, which was able to identify over 65 families that can use our support through Operation Snowflake. And student attendance, the November average daily attendance rate was 97.6 percent, and we continue to have great monthly attendance records because of our amazing parents and teacher and staff. And, okay, so Bardo PE teacher, Mr. Roy, took his high school student athletes to another state sectional champion in soccer this year. Bardo PE teacher, Mr. Stark, and his cross-country team received Middlesex County Sportsmanship Award. A Bardo fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Stahl, raised a significant amount of money for a pet food drive. Bardo teacher, Ms. Belber, received a donor's choose grant to fund and purchase her fourth grade friends in need of a rug project. And Bardo teachers, Mrs. Picora and Mrs. Lydic, led the PTO fundraiser, the Kids Stuff Coupon fundraiser, which raised over $1,700. The middle school, the middle school high school orchestra concert was on the 4th, and the middle school high school band concert was on the 5th. Many people came for nights of fun music provided by our talented musicians.
And for the high school, Service Day, we had Service Day two weeks ago, I believe, and more people signed up to do workshops than in previous years, so we have considered it a good success. Many clubs held workshops, such as making paper cranes, designing terracycling boxes, and making crafts for a youth center and other service-oriented activities. Like Zaiyu said, the high school and middle school orchestra and band concerts were on the 4th and 5th. The high school Model UN team went to Rutgers University Model United Nations Conference last month. Seventeen Highland Park students won awards for their work representing delegates of the United Nations. The Chinese Culture Club held a night market where attendees could purchase Chinese and Japanese food and snacks. The high school also held a blood drive last month run by the Red Cross Club. Eligible students were able to donate blood, and we collected 36 units, which was very successful. The winter choir concert is coming up on the 12th, followed by progress reports on the 18th, and winter break starting on the 24th.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the students? No? Ooh, everybody's so quiet tonight. Must be December. Everybody's just kind of-
We're like-
Exhausted.
Borderline hibernating. Okay, that brings us to you, Dr. Taylor.
It was my intention for Ms. McNally to talk about the state of the Irving program tonight, but she was struck with the bug, and I sent her home. So she'll be here next Monday, and we'll make a presentation after Student Spotlight. I would like to add two things, though, that aren't on the agenda. One is sincere thanks and great admiration and appreciation to Michelle McFadden and Avery Haley-Lock, who, along with Mr. Lassiter, and I sat on a panel at Rutgers last Tuesday to share the work we've been doing to support gender identity rights. And I think it's safe to say, Michelle and Avery, that, no humility here, it was really all about us, but, okay. There were some other panelists there, but it's obvious that our work is out there, and people are recognizing the progressive things that we've been doing. Avery was the only student, I think, in attendance at the entire event, so it was really a very successful presentation. So, thank you. The other thing I'd like to add is, per the request from one of our board members, Rob Magaziner, that I do share public a couple of thoughts that I got from the student cabinet that I put together. Every year, I gather anywhere between five and 10 students who represent different grade levels, once every couple of months during lunch, every pizza, to get a pulse from the students on how things are going. It's a chance for them to also hear from me about things I want to try to get out in the student body. We have an especially diverse group this year, which I'm very happy about. Some of the things that I heard included the need from the seniors for there to be additional hands available in the guidance office to assist with that process. What I heard from the students is what I've heard from the guidance staff and other people. We appear to be shorthanded. We need to put more resources in there if we can to help students, especially with those who are looking at post-secondary life. The grade nine to 10 guidance counselor rotation, I'm sorry, eight and nine guidance counselor rotation is still something which we need to look at. Right now, we have Ms. Middleton covering the middle school and the high school on alternate days every other day. She actually flip-flops her office space with Ms. Luxa, the dean of restored practices. But I think I need to revisit that with Mr. Lassiter and Mrs. Semier. Students obviously appreciate Ms. Middleton a lot and want more of her, so we have to try to split her and put her in two places at once, or we have to figure out a maybe even better way to provide access. Praise for Ms. Luxa. Her circle talks have been very helpful. Students have very much appreciated that, who spoke with me during my lunch meeting, of her efforts, especially during lunch. I didn't know this, but apparently Ms. Luxa pops into the cafeteria at the high school from time to time and will try to have pop-up circle talks and seek volunteer students who want to take part in these circle talks during lunch, and they're apparently pretty The students, and this was actually consensus among the, almost entire group, they all were nodding their heads in affirmation, when a couple of students said, you know, the circle talks that we had the first day of school were terrific, and they would love to see more of that. And I did share an article with the board, actually, it wasn't an article, it was a sample framework from the Oakland School District in California about restored practices, and there's a chart that points to a place at which I'd liked us to be in a year or two, which would have us incorporating community-building circle talks on a very regular basis in all of our classes. So that's our vision, that's our hope. And it's apparent that students want that, too, at least the ones I spoke with, who I spoke with. Things seem to be more chill in this school this year, the high school. Students, I was told, appreciate the new code of conduct, apparently communicates behaviors very clearly. Hallways have been relatively quiet because of Mr. Harrison's presence. One thing that was disconcerting that I heard from two students, both freshmen, is that homophobia is an issue that we have to look at. They said that there's still a prevalence of lack of acceptance from some students, and of course, you know, being a native Highland Parker for 25-plus years, I was really disappointed to hear that. But I did share all this information with Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Golden Cooper, and they were very good. They were very responsive. They followed up with me and said, oh, yeah, these are some things that we're going to have to look at. And this will continue. I'll have another meeting in a couple of months.
Great. Anybody have any questions for Scott on that? No?
I guess I just wanted to know if these students are the same students that you've taken with throughout the year or two you ask, you know, occasionally?
That's a good question. I'm sticking with the same group. My thinking is, the more I meet with them, hopefully, and by the way, I also am able to relate to them in the halls, you know, formally, the better relationship, the stronger the relationship I'll establish, and maybe even the more trust I can develop among us so that I can hear all the nitty-gritties.
And how did you choose these students?
That's it?
How did you choose these students?
So this year was different. In the past, I asked the student government to help out, the advisory of student government. This year, I asked Ms. Golden Cooper, who had a couple of months to get to know the students, and Mr. Lassiter to send these students my way. And they were definitely a different group than that which I've received in the past, more diverse. You know, I purposely told, I purposely looked for students who aren't always upfront. I wanted to hear from the leaders, the informal leaders in all the cliques.
I was just going to ask, what are the grades represented? What are the grade levels? I know you said multiple.
So it's a cross-section, you know, it's different grade levels. Hang on one second. I've got two freshmen, two seniors. Oh, it's actually a neat, two, two, and two. Two, 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 eight total. Two ninth, two 10th, two 11th, two 12th. And they all showed up for the first meeting.
So I would just say, great to hear about the, how the circles have kind of caught on in a lot of ways, and I think that's really healthy, and, you know, hopefully that can be an ongoing, regular thing, that the kids, you know, continue to enjoy it and get something out of it. I am, you know, in terms of the guidance process, I think that's something that we really do need to continue to look at. I know we're doing some of it, but I would like to think that if they're speaking out about a need, that we try to figure out a way or ways to help with that.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that, if I could. In a lot of just like conversations with students that me and Zaiyu too have, the lack of support in terms of the guidance counselors, especially for seniors, is pretty problematic. Like, these people write our college recommendation letters for most of our colleges, and we don't really have a very close relationship with them. Personally, I don't think I've talked to my counselor much more than like, you know, really small talk, and she doesn't really know a lot about me, which like, I don't hold that against her at all. She has tons of students that she has to get through. And so I think it would not only help, like, the guidance counselors have a better job and function, but also help our students get into better colleges if we could have counselors that more intimately knew their students.
Yeah, and also, like, so, the, the guidance counselors are sometimes so backed up that they can't finish what they have to do. For example, one of my friend's early application, like deadlines, was like sort of missed by one of the guidance counselors, so that her, the early application was turned into a regular decision when she had submitted all her material on time except for the guidance recommendations. So I think that's a bit of a problem for our students. And also, the fact that, like, we have a new guidance counselor this year that, like, we don't, doesn't know us, and we don't know anything, like, about her, really. So it's sort of like, if we could establish, like, if we could start establishing relationship with our guidance counselors from ninth grade, like, I've basically never talked to them until this year, and then I've been there like once every day for a week. So like, it's just crazy, and like, it's just, I don't know how to do it, and so I'm confused, a bunch of people are confused, and we just, if we could establish, like, a report in, like, earlier years, I think that would be very beneficial.
Well, it does seem like they have a tremendous amount on their plate, too much to do amongst too few people, to cover too many kids, and too many tasks. And I just wonder whether we may want to think about going outside of that area to help out in the, I know this is a big area, but to help out in college application process somehow.
The leadership team begins its conversations about personnel needs as we look at the budget next year tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So I can tell you, that's going to come up, guidance counselors.
And we've talked briefly about that in finance, not so much as a finance issue, but rather as a, an issue of, if we had money from some other area, some other personnel area we didn't need, where would we put it? And it seems to me that that's a place to put it, because as long as we've lived here, this has been a problem. I mean, my kids were, who were in their 40s, went to high school here, and I heard the same stories, and parents helped, but the guidance counselors have always been very, very overwhelmed with the amount of work that they have to do, and we need to do something about it.
Scott, could we look at a couple of other similarly sized schools to us and see what their ratios are? How many counselors do they have? Do they have a supervisor? Do they not have a supervisor? It seems like we just, we need to look at some structure options, you know, and not just kind of like take a stab in the dark at this. I mean, I remember, this was one of the positions that was cut, was a guidance supervisor. I don't know if that's a good use of money. I mean, I think we need to really do a serious investigation of what the best use. If we find money to put towards this, what, where's the best place to put it, and what are there models out there that are successful for-
Or professional development, perhaps, for the people in those jobs.
Right. And, you know, unfortunately, we can't control really a new guidance counselor, you know, I mean, people are going to leave or move or come or, you know, I mean, obviously, the goal would be to keep somebody here the whole four years of kids in school, but we can't always control for that. But we can, we can try to make sure that we have a proper ratio so that, so that the guidance counselors aren't so overburdened and can't get to their kids.
You know, we've talked about it as an equity issue, which it is, but it's an issue, I think it's pervasive for everybody, really is.
I know you just threw it out there, but do we know of any districts that are performing well in terms of guidance?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what Scott's got to figure out.
Right. So, yeah, not only like, so comparative to other districts our size, but also whether or not-
It's working.
We're working for them, because-
There's a communication lapse. I guess the parent of a senior, everything that Avery and Zaiyu said is happening in my house as well.
Is your mic on?
It is.
I don't think it is. Hello? There you go. Maybe it's need to be closer.
So what I was saying was that I feel like everything that Zaiyu and Avery said was resonating with me as the mother of a senior. It's not necessarily, like Rob said, it's not necessarily just happening to kids who are less likely to go to guidance for help, or it's happening to everyone across the board. But also, you know, anecdotally, I know that I ran into my guidance counselor from high school who lives in town, and she's still working as a guidance counselor in public schools. And I think that she had said that it was, the ratio was not that bad considering the size of the school, and that lots of schools have weighed more, you know, higher ratio of students to guidance counselors, but that there is a supervisor position that's generally held in every guidance department.
Yeah, so I think that's-
But more than, yeah, more than that, I feel like that's just an anecdotal kind of thing. More than that, there's like a communication lapse between parents and the school, because we don't know, you know, we're kind of just, even if we're college graduates ourselves, like, we're dealing with all of these things happening digitally. When we went to school, they happened, you know, via paperwork, and you actually did like interviews and other things. So a lot of it is different, just generationally different, but also, like, I think the communication is not happening between the schools and the families. Like, what's expected of us? How can we help, you know? I would be willing to help other kids in the senior class, you know, if I knew what to do, but, I mean, as a parent, we're all going through this separately in every single home, and it feels like wasteful, that all of us have to go through this learning process alone.
I mean, I'll really look forward to getting some more information back about how we can-
And that was one of the interesting things at the college night at Zone Six, when they were talking about, because I think there was one element there that they were saying where, you know, like, parents don't really know the terms, the terminology, what it means for all these different aspects between like safety school, early admission, you know, what that all means. So there, even for, on the parent's part, there's some hesitancy to even start the conversation with a guidance person, because, you know, if you don't have the familiarity with it, you're just like, where do I even start? So, you know, there's that one night, which for me was, you know, I would think that my son has a lot of different advantages in terms of going to college, but I completely lost, even having gone to college, you know, a lot of the terms and what they were talking about in terms of the application process. So, you know, it was informative, I think, for anyone who went to that meeting that night.
Do we still have that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just add that?
Yeah.
Because it does piggyback off of that. Irene Max, who ran that workshop, is offering, and I actually am working with her, offering counseling to students and parents who are going through the process, just based on our own experiences and knowledge we've accumulated. Sharice Richardson also is making herself available. So I did want to put that out there now, sort of formally, that that service is going to be available for any high schooler and parent who wants to avail themselves of it, and they would just need to get in touch with Ashton at the Zone Six Center and arrange that.
That would be the kind of communication that I was referring to, not coming directly from the school to the parents.
But is there like a beginning of the year for juniors and for seniors, kind of college night?
No.
Because I think that would be a good place to start.
Well, we did receive some-
No, I mean, I mean, a place, like, one night where the students and their parents can come in and be-
There was something that was offered in that same vein, but it was actually Rutgers individuals who came to advertise the Rutgers universities. It was different. It was not what you're thinking.
Right.
So I think we'll, we'll have Scott come back to us with some concrete stuff, because I'm sure we could all wax prophetic for a long time about-
We need something.
Yeah. All right. So if nobody else has anything there, let's move on to the committee reports. And I guess, Rob, you're gonna-
Sure, because the-
Chat with us about the curriculum instruction?
Yeah, curriculum instruction did sort of meet. It was Scott, Darcy, and I attended. So in terms of what we discussed that night, on the agenda this evening, the only real element there that we want to talk about is music theory. We already have an AP Music Theory course, but there's really nothing there for students who want to take music theory without going to the rigor of AP. So the proposal is to add the course of just music theory. We also discussed the middle school math redesign, because that is continuing. There was a district staff meeting on November 29 to debrief from an advisory group meeting. And then one attendee, luckily, of the advisory group meeting was a resident that is an expert in math curriculum and de-tracking. But the key points from that include, and I'll start with the main one, where we're looking at revising the timeline so that's implemented in a thorough way, with the full implementation being in the 2020-2021 school year. But there's some very good reasoning behind that. Some of that is because when they're looking at revising the middle school curriculum, we also have to look at how it impacts the curriculum at Bardo School. So there are some elements that were, changes that would have to be implemented at Bardo Schools. That way, when those students move up to the middle school, they're already on track for the changes that are going to be implemented here at the middle school. Also, we've been using Conker Math for a number of years, and we're talking about building on the foundation that we have from Conker Math and using Complex Math as, you know, as the model that we're using, because that is geared towards providing teachers with the understanding to support all students in the classroom. That way, they can fill in those gaps that they might be missing. I sent out a thing where there's a link to the Complex Math, so you can look at their website.
Isn't it Complex Instruction?
Yeah, Complex Instruction.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then one of the elements that Mark might be interested in was whether or not we might need an additional basic skills teacher at Bardo, as well as additional professional development for teachers. And that professional development will be not only at the middle school, but also at Bardo. Next up, we were looking at expanding our culturally responsive books for the middle school and high school to include books that have transgender characters to them, and these would be available to teachers and students as choice books. They wouldn't necessarily be the course guide or like that everyone has to read. They would be additional books that the teacher could draw from. And then we spent a lot of time looking at some demographic data related to the students who are bussed from the Cedar Lane housing, and then also looked at how that demographic data, or excuse me, the demographic data for the high school in terms of school activities, the sports, the clubs, the organizations, orchestra, band, et cetera. One of the components that still needs to be done is looking at how the student bus data relates to the participants in the different groups at the high school and or middle school, or through the different, through the different schools. Right now, we just looked at how it breaks down, but further component would be like asking those students, you know, as they get on the bus, hey, how do you participate in things at school? Do you feel like you're held back from participating in things at school based on having to take the bus? And we also looked at data related to a survey that was administered to the teachers about the, oh, what's the word?
Technology survey?
Yeah, technology survey. Thank you. There was another component to the technology survey, which was going to the students, and that was still being compiled. So we just looked at the one aspect of it, of what the teacher's impression of technology was for the students. So it'd be interesting to see how the teacher's impressions compare to what the students actually report.
I just wanted to interrupt.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Give you an update that today I did receive the data, and I haven't looked at it yet because there's a lot to it, but on the heels of this data, I'm going to be sending out another directive to the faculty about the use of technology on the home front. So I will share with the Equity and, I'm sorry, the Curriculum Committee and the Equity and Excellence Committee, I drafted that directive. I know it's something that we've talked about.
I remember we had one-
I'm sorry, it was policy, for giving policy and equity.
Not to burden you too much.
But that's about the homework policy, correct, Scott?
I'm sorry.
That's about the homework policy.
Correct.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, the directive. The policy change that we're talking about is going to be brought up to the Professional Relations Committee on Thursday.
Fabulous. Thank you. Wonderful.
And then, we also briefly discussed the update on the middle school to high school honors AP pipeline, which I think you would probably be better to report on it, but he shared some of the, some of what came out of that meeting. So it was, that way, we're not completely in the dark, but I think you have more on it.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions for Rob?
Quick question about the music class course. So is that a- So is that a high school only course in music theory? And is that?
Correct.
Okay. And is that a continuation of something that's presented for middle school?
No, no, this is be a new elective. We're piloting the semester-long version of it. But it'd be our intention, if it's, if it garners interest in the students, to do it for a full year next year. And I think, as Rob pointed out a few minutes ago, this is a course intended for the students who don't want to take the AP level course, but still want to be in that, in that mindset, that program.
How many kids are in the AP?
I'll tell you right now. In a minute.
I remember taking music theory in seventh and eighth grade. And that seemed like a great time to be taken. It was, it was fascinating at that time. We were certainly old enough, and I would just encourage us to start thinking, if this goes well, to expand it downward.
Well, I could tell you as well that we generally perform well on the AP, Music AP course test. So I'm going to pull out that information for you up too. But let me first try to tell you what the number of students are right now in music theory. So AP Music Theory currently has a small number of students. Four. Which is a smaller number than the past.
Last year there were six.
So there was a perception that more people wanted to do it, but they were deterred by the AP workload?
Sorry.
So why are we proposing another, with only four people in it? Was there a perception that other people would want to be in the course, but they were deterred by the AP workload?
Well, it has been a very popular course in the past. I think this is an anomaly year. I know my daughter took it last year. They were.
I used to think there were six.
Yeah, there were six last year.
It was six students last year.
Six students last year? Seems like a lot of resources for a class that is thus far not super popular.
Last year we had seven students in the class.
Seven, one, one dropped out.
I'm sorry.
One of the students dropped out. In the beginning of the year.
Seven became six.
Yeah.
Hold on. Everybody's talking at once.
So where are we going with this? I was going to say, maybe you can get back to me on this, whether or not there's a potential for this to be a music theory class with an AP option. And then that way, maybe we can have some efficiency in having.
I could brush the, the idea, see what Mr. Lassiter says.
I, I feel like that needs to be kind of standard from this point forward. I personally feel like that's the direction we would like to go. As far as I can tell, that's the direction this board would like to go. So anything that comes down the pike should be.
Especially when a class has four kids in it.
Especially when a class has four kids in it. I mean, that goes without saying, right? So, yeah.
It's hard to propose a second class when there's only four in the AP.
I feel like that's, that's, to me, indicating that there's a lot of, or our, there's a, there's a lot missing in our communication. If this is coming to us, like after everything that we've said.
I wouldn't go there. I mean, I think.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's true. I'm just saying that's the feeling that I'm getting.
No, because we're not, I think we're talking about doing it a different way than, now every class that comes to us has to be with a whatever option.
Right. Let's just talk, this is the music.
I don't say it has to. I'm not saying it has to. I'm not saying it's mandated, or it should be. I'm just saying that that's the direction that we would all like to go. So that, that is not an idea that should have come from just minutes ago. Like, that idea should have been, right?
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't know that I 100% agree. But I, I hear what you're saying.
Well, yeah, I'm not trying to shame anyone. I hope that's not coming across.
That's, I have to say, that is a little bit how it's sounding. So I think that's where I'm trying to like stack it up a little bit.
That's just me being me. I just feel like that's, you know, it's, it's important for us on the Curriculum Committee to make that very clear.
Follow up with the board interested in potentially making up, as Rob pointed out, an AP, a music theory with AP Music Option course. My initial thinking is, what I know about AP programs, it'd be very hard to distinguish the two in one program. It's why we don't have an AP Option course for history and for English, because AP does have a very rigorous curriculum.
We actually did it in French, because they had the same problem. They didn't have a big enough enrollment. It didn't work wonderfully for a language, because then the teacher couldn't prep as well for the, you know, the verbal part of the AP exam. But don't we have like a limit on size for classes? You know, I, I know in the past before, I think before we actually had the music theory, it was in the catalog a lot, but we didn't have enough kids, so.
Yeah, we've used this as rationale for cutting other classes, having this small.
Well, I think the question that I take away is, what's the rationale for having the second class if we only have four students currently in the AP class?
Could I follow up? By approving this new class, that doesn't necessarily mean we're committed to offering it in a particular year, correct? It just means that it, it is a class that is available.
Correct. But you can, yeah, it's our intention, if, since we're putting this up forward to run it in the spring. But no, it's not something we have to commit to.
Oh, but so this spring it would be?
He was like, a semester for this year, if it goes well, a full year for next year.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Fifth of somebody's teaching load. That's a, you know, that's a serious investment if we've only got four kids in the A catalog.
Right. But if you go from four to eight and, or 10, that becomes a thing.
Sorry?
If we go from four kids or six to eight or 10, four of whom are doing the AP work and some of whom are doing slightly less and not preparing for the AP exam, might be doable for a teacher. I, I might think. I'll provide more information.
Sounds good.
I do have one question about the AP Music Theory. So if we were to expand this to a CP class, would that mean hiring another teacher or just expanding one teacher's, I guess, roles?
Like, what's the utilization of the teachers in this case?
Like, would, would that require hiring another teacher to teach the, or just using the?
We would use, have a current teacher who has a pole in his schedule teach that class.
And also, I, the problem with having an AP Option of Music Theory class is that music theory, like, I took it last year. It's like, even with six people, we have like a lot of flexibility, but we still barely got everything done. And so I think that if we had an option class, like, different people are on different skill levels. And that might like really hurt our chances of our AP students doing well on the exam. And like, just sort of, it, it won't be productive for the class as a whole, because it'll be sort of restrictive, in a sense.
So that sounds to me like there's even less need for an AP and more need for a CP.
Exactly.
Well, I think part of the reason that the AP class even, or the AP Music Theory class has students is that a lot of students are drawn to taking an AP class, because it strengthens your college application. And I don't know that you would get as many students with a CP class.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we need a lot more information before we can.
Yeah, that's why I asked Scott just to take a look at whether or not it's something that's even doable.
No, but I mean, yeah, I mean, more information as to whether that it's even doable. But why we'd be offering, what the rationale is for offering this one when the other one is so, the subscription to that class is so low. I mean, like I said, we've cut classes that had larger numbers than that. So it's, that's, it's a lot of money to spend on a class with four kids.
Especially when we could beef up.
We're talking about a guidance.
Beef up a program of guidance that affects everyone and talk about college admissions.
These are the kind of decisions that we're going to have to make.
I'd rather spend the money on that, you know?
No, but I think AP Music Theory is a very unique class compared to like other electives offered, except for like band orchestra, but those are period As. Because it's like, really the only music thing. So like, we have a bunch of aspiring musicians and a bunch of talented musicians. And I think that this course like offers them some, like, a course to do that is like on a higher level. There's like music technology, there's, yeah, and that, I think, is the only other music elective. So I think having AP Music Theory is like actually extremely important towards students, to sort of encourage them, like, any aspiring musicians to be able to.
It seems like a regular music theory class would serve the same role. I mean, I see that the AP thing is a resume booster. That is important. I understand that. My kids will shortly be going through that process as well. But I, if the interest is in music, then let's have a class that's available to a lot of people, rather than one class with four kids and one with two.
Yeah, I said that just as an assumption. I tend to overtake APs.
I'm sure you're right.
It sounds rational.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll get more information and we'll, we'll be able to better decide with more information at our disposal. All right, if nobody else has any questions about curriculum, we will move on to finance?
Thank you, Darcy. So the Finance Committee met before the board meeting at 5:45 this evening. The large part of the meeting was spent discussing our insurance policy with our new insurance broker, Latonya Brennan, who did a wonderful job presenting to us our expenses and our coverages and our deductibles and taking some specific cases. And, you know, telling us where we have coverage, where we used to have coverage, how that's changed. And we learned, we learned a lot about where we are. The good news is that we currently have coverage for some cases, which in the past, we did not get covered for. But we had a great deal of difficulty getting the coverage for. We also learned that we have a much better deductible than we thought. I, I don't know if I should go into the numbers, but if it matters. But we have a $7,500 deductible as opposed to what we thought might have been a $15,000 deductible. And that's pretty meaningful in terms of what even, and that covers, that covers both the settlements and our legal fees. And you can use up $7,500 in legal fees very quickly. You can also use up $15,000 very quickly in legal fees. So our coverage is good. Our deductibles are much better than we thought. And I, not only did we learn a lot, but it's given us a lot more information on how we can proceed in the future in dealing with any litigation that, that we, that we have. So that was just a very, very good use of our, our, our time. We also talked about some new students that we've had, which are students who've just come into the district in two different placements in Bartle School. Some of whom are classified and will cost us, cause us to need a half-time special education teacher. And some of whom may likely cause us to have some out-of-district placements, including one that we have tonight, which are ferociously, as I say at virtually every meeting, ferociously expensive. And which, any savings we get, either through what I talked about last month, through savings in the insurance, medical insurance that we're seeing, and some of the additional aid we're getting from the state, it just eats that all up. So it's, it's definitely a problem. And we'll be discussing, we did discuss with, with Dr. Taylor, getting some information on how we might put some programs together to keep some of these students in district as opposed to out of district, if it's at all possible. We also talked about, very briefly, about the enrollment report, which is virtually the same as it was a year ago, which is, I think, very good news. It hasn't dropped. It hasn't gone up a lot, which is, could be a potential problem. And our running lists of unforeseen revenues and unforeseen expenses is on the plus side. It's not a huge amount, but it's enough that we have some confidence that we'll go through the year and we'll be in a good position going into next year. A reasonable position. Not good is the wrong word. A reasonable position going in.
How about not catastrophic?
Not, not catastrophic position going into next year's budget. So with that said, and I hope I didn't miss anything. I took a lot of notes. But let's go on to the agenda unless anyone has any questions on those items. Okay. So we, we have our usual Item Two bill lists. We have Item Three, which are the travel and related expense reimbursement reports. We have contractors for professional services. The first one of those is a, a consulting, is consulting for, consulting for our leadership team. Quote, "Community Circle." If, Scott, did, did you have any comments on that? This is the, the Community Circle, Fox Consulting, and, and the leadership team?
Sure, I can just.
Just briefly.
I could point out that as a leadership team, we wanted to build our relationship as well and thought it would be helpful to see circle talks being modeled, because we have not been trained.
Oh, great.
Specifically in that area. So, yeah, that's, sure, it's from IIRP, and he'll support us.
Perfect, thank you. And the other items are substitute school nurse for a, for a long-term medical leave for one of our school nurses. And then carpenter for the Spring Musical and lighting, et cetera, as well for the Spring Musical. Item Five is accepting the award of $2,000 from the Anton Banco Award to purchase science instructional supplies. Do, do we know if this is related to the teacher that we had in the district? Mr. Banco, who was a science teacher for many years? What's that?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yes.
Well-known name in our town.
Well-known name. Both my kids had Mr. Banco in ninth grade. And he was a kind of well-known teacher here, famous teacher.
Never came up in conversations.
I didn't, okay, well, I just brought up nice memories. Item Six is the approval of the out-of-district placement that I was referring to before. At the, at the rate, I said $65,000 or thereabouts, it's $64,714.20. It's very expensive. Item Seven is approval of idle-free zones throughout the school district. While I'm not going to read this, what I would say about it is, it is state law that idling go on no longer than three minutes. And the reason I know that is because the Board of Health discussed idle-free zones and putting a resolution forward to the Borough Council about idle-free zones in town. So it just happens that we have it on our agenda, which I had seen our agenda. So I told them at our, at our meeting last week. And I will, would like to read the variant, which says, "Whereas moving beyond New Jersey exists, New Jersey's existing no-idling code of three minutes would significantly improve public health air quality, reduce costs and greenhouse gas emissions. Be resolved that the Board of Education supports the adoption of idle-free zones on school grounds, including a pledge by school buses, school employees, and parents to turn off school bus engines while waiting to load and unload students, and turn off vehicles when vehicles are parked while, when parents are waiting to pick up and drop off children." Of course, this is a support of that measure. We can't force anyone to do anything, although they would be in violation of the state law by idling for more than the three minutes. And that is my report.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Mark?
I will say this, the, because it's from the New Jersey Science Convention. And they do reference Anton Banco being the small-cision cataract surgeon who, and that is, goes back to the same Anton Banco that taught here.
Oh, is it? Hmm, okay, thank you.
But, so it's, it's, it's named after him, but I don't know necessarily how exactly the New Jersey Science Convention arrived at the name for the award.
I see.
It's primarily for K through five teachers. It's nominate, you can nominate them in a number of different ways.
Excellent.
And my father-in-law, who actually taught at the high school, he's part of the Science Convention. So like, as soon as he saw that someone from here was being awarded the Anton, he, he gave me a call to say, hey, Rob, this is, this is awesome for Tracy Maiden and awesome for your schools. And it's, it's a really great thing.
And, and Mr. Banco did a wonderful thing for my son years back in, in putting some of his work to a national award, where we in fact ended up, he, he won for his grade level. And we ended up down in Lower Manhattan with the, one of the federal agencies getting a gold plaque and a lunch and a whole bunch of stuff. And so it was, just brought back wonderful memories.
Actually, they say that the war, the award is in his honor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Cool. I like it.
One quick question. I, I noticed the $50 an hour for the contract amount for the carpenter and the lighting. It says to be paid by student funds. What does that mean?
The money that they raise the door.
For student activities. It's not coming from the kids themselves.
Oh, yeah, okay. I figured it wasn't, but I didn't know what that term was. Yeah, thank you. Okay, super. Okay, super excited for the musical, by the way.
And for the, oh, sorry, for the no-idling zones, is it just like a pledge? Is there any penalty for like going longer than three minutes, or is this like?
Let's think one up. No, there's not. [laughing].
I think you can get it. I think the police can give you a nice ticket if you're idling for more than three minutes. And I think I saw someone get one today, which is why I know. No, in New Brunswick, I was picking someone up at the station, and there was a police car, and there was a guy sitting with his nice car with the cop in the corner in the police car giving him a talking to. He was clearly sitting in a place where everyone always sits and idles, waiting for people for a long time, and he was writing them out a ticket. So I think you get a ticket.
There you go. And my husband just got his first new car in 15 years, which I've already told Dr. Taylor about, and it's got that fancy thing where-
It shuts off.
It shuts itself off. You're sitting at a red light. I'm like, wow! So someday, this is all going to be superfluous. We're all going to have these fancy cars that only run when they want to. I don't know, I don't know when they're gonna run.
And they take you where you, they tell, you tell them to go.
You just tell them where to go.
Ten years, ten years.
All right. If nobody has anything else for Mark, then we will move on to personnel with Judy. Hi, hi. Okay. So we did have our Personnel Committee meeting, a very short one, and a lot of it overlapped with what we've all been talking about tonight. So it does look like we will need an additional part-time special ed teacher at Bartle for a new student who's coming in with special needs. We are in compliance right now because our gifted and talented teacher is helping out, but we are advertising for a new special ed teacher. And we talked about a wish list for personnel. Oh, okay. Wish list for personnel, and as Rob was talking about, top of the list would be a basic skills for math, basic skills math teacher at Bartle in preparation for the detracking in the middle school. This person would support the new fourth and fifth math curriculum. And we also, let's see, yeah, again, talked about how in our perfect world, we really do need more guidance help. So besides that, I will go through the agenda. Oh, six, okay. Okay. That's it? Okay. All right, so let's see. We have our usual source for teacher sub-list. Number three is a request for, to approve a medical leave of absence. Number four is, we have found a job coach for the high school, Emily Castro, effective December 11th, so that was good news. We also have a job coach para-substitute that we have on the agenda, Mary Harkins. We are not going to be, the person for number six, we're canceling out that. That person's not taking the job, so skip over to number seven. Oh, this is exciting news. So Ms. Claslow, she has accepted the special ed position over at Irving, effective December 17th. So she will now be in the new ABA, the additional ABA classroom.
And I do want to add that I have a meeting on Wednesday with a finalist for the position to replace Ms. Claslow at the middle school, who happens to be an ex-student in Highland Park, not of mine, in Highland Park. Hopefully that works out.
Okay, then we have just some Schedule B positions that are being filled. Number eight, before-and-after-school program staff. Number nine, we have a volunteer coach, Joe Palacastro for Boys and Girls Basketball. We have a number 11, professional development presenter after school, Jean Gray. Number 12 is a resolution to approve the following Title III immigrant welcome handbook writing teacher. So let me talk a little bit about that. So Jen Lugo is spearheading a welcome handbook, and she is going to have that handbook translated for both Spanish and Mandarin-speaking parents and guardians. And this will be new for us, we haven't had this before. So that resolution will provide some staff, some hours for staff member to work on writing on the handbook. Okay, then we have our drag and tutoring teachers, number 13. Irving, before-school drag and tutor teachers, 15. Resolution to approve Title III before-school ESL teacher from January 2019 to May 30th. Number 16 is approving Title I academic coach for the high school, Nicole Marioni. So we, Ann and I were asking what exactly, how that worked with the academic coaches, how the students find out about that. And Scott let us know that students are recommended to the academic coaches if they receive poor grades and/or if they, the intervention and referral services team refers them for support. We have 64 students using this support and 12 coaches in the program right now. And let's see. Number 17 is a list of pairs to provide after-school support for special ed students attending extracurricular activities. 18 is additional hours for nursing staff to provide support for the Bartle Nurse Office record-keeping. And the last one is just a revision of a toileting stipend for the following pairs. You'll see that. And that's about it. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Judy?
Pretty straightforward. I wanted to ask about like the substitute teacher situation. So like, right now in the high school, we just shove all the kids into cafeteria and just whatever, there's like assigned work and all the other stuff, but like-
Hopefully you don't get shoved in there.
Yeah.
Hopefully you just walk in there with your own volition.
That's questionable. So the problem is like with, it's sort of sometimes like crowded. Like today, there was the professional development for the English teachers all throughout the high school, so like I was there for two periods, and it was just basically filled, like both periods. And it was really ineffective if we wanted to do work because it was sort of loud, and it was annoying, and also just having so many people is just not productive.
So that's actually a really good point. So maybe on days where it's PD and there are going to be that many teachers out, maybe there needs to be a different plan for PD days. That makes a lot of sense. I mean, because we never, just give me one second. We discussed it for kind of like random absences, but if a whole department is doing PD and the whole English department's going to be gone.
Had that happened frequently?
Yeah.
Relatively frequently?
Yeah, yeah. What I wanted to say is, because especially a lot of, some of the teachers, such as I know my previous psychology teacher, a lot of the teachers both teach English and science, so they're gone both days. So what happens usually is kids will like have one period of the day when they attend class, but the rest of it is just spent in the cafeteria. Today, I had two classes. But yeah, I think it's definitely very helpful and it's a good way, I think, of saving money to use the cafeteria when it's kind of, you know, you said random absences or, you know, when people get sick. But definitely during like PD days, when there's a lot of teachers gone, it would be more helpful to hire subs.
Yeah, that totally makes sense.
I have a senior, and she was able to go to two classes today. She was in the cafeteria the whole day playing video games. There was no work assigned, there was nothing to do, and it was a waste. And this is during, you know, all these college applications and all the nerves and the, it was just, yeah.
I can pass something racial out to Mr. Wasser, okay?
It's not the first time that's happened, so yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Judy? No, nothing else on personnel? Okay, so we will move on. Thank you, Judy. We will move on to policy. Ann?
Okay. We are looking at the same policies we looked at at the last meeting. Now they are up for second reading, meaning that at our next meeting, we will vote on whether to adopt them. I don't believe there have been any changes to the policies you see on the agenda since the last time we looked at them. There's one policy, 5350, student suicide prevention, which we passed on first reading. We've now tabled it. Darcy reached out to an expert in the field, and we're going to look at some of the suggestions that she made and consider incorporating those. So we pulled that from the agenda. Everything else is as we discussed it last time.
And I just wanted to add that at our meeting, we spent the vast majority of the time talking about the homework policy, which is super important. And Scott, you're going to be meeting with Keith and the team, and I hope that once we have some resolution, we can, on that, we can put it on for first reading because it is very, very important.
We'd actually, I had in my notes that we were going to put it on for first reading on December 17th, but that's our next, yeah. We did, do you recall that as well?
We did, we did say that.
Yeah, so I mean, we would sort of be doing it without a workshop meeting-
Right.
-just for first reading.
Right.
Because it is kind of an urgent situation that students not continue to, be in a situation of not being able to do their homework.
And I would-
You know, we obviously probably should consult with Darcy before we get into a big. We're definitely going to do this next week.
I would argue only that you reach out to Ann, Scott, if there's any issues that come up that need to be resolved before we can put it on for first reading. But it is, I think, we all feel, pretty urgent.
Yeah, of course, we want to see if the teachers, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
If the Professional Relations Committee has, you know, big problems with it, obviously, we would want to know about that first, clearly. Yeah, that was the bulk of our policy meeting. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mark.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
And when do you guys meet again?
I don't remember, but January-
20th? I'm just-
Seventeenth, I think.
Seventeenth?
I'll play one right now.
Yeah.
I apologize, it's on the calendar somewhere.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay. That was only a few days off.
Close.
Scott, do we know when we'll-
I'm sorry. Do we only have one meeting in January, or do we have two?
We're proposing two. The reorg and then January 28th, I think it is.
Twenty-eighth will be our second meeting.
Right. Yeah, January's so weird.
Darcy, while we're on the topic, I just can't remember. At our reorganization meeting, will we use that as a workshop? I can never remember what we do.
We've put a couple of action items on that agenda in the past, but we try not to because there's so much to do, and, but that's why we have the January later.
No, I just meant would we on the first meeting in January?
Yeah, there's typically not much on there.
Not much? Okay. I just wondered. But the 28th, that's, yeah, that's right.
Correct.
Right. But, you know.
So that could be a second reading for the-
There's a lot to do, but not a lot's going to change because we'll all still be here.
We'll all still be here. Yay.
So I was, do you mind if I just ask, Scott, the student tech survey data, do you have a sense for when we might get information about that?
I mentioned earlier that I have all that data now.
Right, I was wondering when the board might have that.
Oh, when I call it? Oh, I'm going to need a couple of days.
Oh, of course, of course. I wasn't trying to pressure you.
Well, actually, what I, my hope was to present to the board Monday night. I could still try to work that through now that I have Megan presenting. It would be a lot to pack in, but if you're all very anxious to see the information, I'd be glad to share it with you on some level, if it's not a full-fledged, pretty presentation, at least the raw stuff.
It doesn't have to be.
No, no, it doesn't need to be. I think the-
It's just so we know something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. I can say that the response rate was very high because we did make the kids at the middle of high school take, you know, actually, complete the survey.
Good idea.
I do have one question about the tech survey. How would that be administered?
Well, I was told, it depends on the school, I believe, at the high school in physical education classes.
Wasn't it already administered?
Did you take the survey?
But, I mean, I guess like, is it by paper? Oh, okay. I just want to make sure you weren't like sending it out on phones.
But were you, did you get the survey though?
Did you say, "Did I out to the people who don't have?"
Are you asking because you were not given the survey, or?
Well, I can't remember if I took the survey. I do remember taking some, filling something out at the beginning of the year, but I don't think it-
We had 340, sorry, go ahead.
I did remember taking something in the beginning of the year, but I don't think it-
There are 480.
It was about a week ago, two weeks.
There are 483 students in the high school. We had 347 respond.
Wonderful. Do we know the middle school response rate yet, or is that still under?
The middle school response rate of 364 students total, 236 replied.
236. It'd be great. I mean, I wonder if there might be, I know you have a lot on your plate, if there might be an opportunity to catch up with the people who are absent. I don't know. I mean, that's, what were those other 100 kids doing in the middle school? Were they absent that day?
Could be a variety, that's a lot of people. I doubt we had that many people absent, but we did receive some blank surveys back, so kids may not have completed the survey.
Bald them up and threw them in a good place.
I think it'll give us a-
No, it's excellent.
It'll give us a good sample.
Yes, yes, it will.
We'll get a sense whether it's 10% or 5% or 50 or 60%.
Hopefully somewhat randomly selected.
Yeah, somewhere in the middle. We need to know something.
Hopefully, the 100 that didn't fill it out aren't the ones that we need to get information from.
That's a question, isn't it?
Yeah. And I wonder, though, could you bring in a copy of the survey next week that we could take a look at, the survey?
That I'm talking about?
The actual survey.
Questions?
The questions?
The survey questions.
Sure, I could email them to the board.
That'd be great. Or distribute it in some way.
Okay.
Thank you.
If no one has anything else for Ann for policy?
One thing.
Yep, okay.
On the medical marijuana administration.
Yes, sir.
Two things. One, I still get hung up on the idea that a student who's 18, whether or not a parent or caregiver, but I think that's the way the laws are in the parent or caregiver. So, but the second part of this, I think one of the things that has to be prohibited is medical marijuana that's administered through either smoking or inhalation.
Oh, yeah, we were talking about that. I mean, I don't know, would you say it has to be prohibited? What?
Just quickly looking online, I found somewhere saying that prohibit the administration of medical marijuana to a student by smoking or other form of inhalation while the student is on school grounds.
I mean, I'm happy to add that. I don't really think it's going to be an issue, but if you would send me the citation, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay. So should we move on to Monique? Equity and Excellence?
Equity and Excellence met on November 29th. We had a very good discussion. The first item on our agenda was the after-school participation demographic data, which got presented out of a discussion that we had a couple of meetings back regarding our concerns with the degree to which underrepresented students are bonded to the school community through extracurricular activities and clubs. Initially, we wanted to identify whether there were groups of students who were not able to participate in after-school activities due to lack of transportation. And that discussion, I know, is still ongoing and data's being collected, but one thing that did strike us the most in the data was the gross underrepresentation of Black and Latinx students among the academic clubs in the high school, particularly Model, or for example, Model UN, Mock Trial, Math League Club, History Quiz Bowl, et cetera. And, you know, it just led to a discussion about the fact that the racial breakdown of these academic clubs is certainly a byproduct and reflection of our classes, our academic classes. And I think until that, you know, we talked about until that being remedied, we would always be struggling with this issue of more racial diversity in our clubs. We agree that it's work that still needs to be done, and I know Scott is interested in getting some ideas from others in the field. He talked about an upcoming conference he's attending, which we all got excited about, the REACH Whole School Reform Conference, which will be in February. The goal of the conference is to reflect on ways to promote high achievement and expectations for all students and increase student achievement. We looked at the conference website, an impressive list of educators, activists, scholars. So Scott's all pumped up and looking forward to getting some, you know, help in areas that we have mutual concerns in. Website, we looked at the website, he shared that, it's also linked in the notes. This led to a discussion about, you know, kind of the urgency to improve our equity and access for our students, and also balancing that out with the recognition that change is not going to be overnight. So Scott, you know, was forthcoming in his philosophy and his approach that incremental change is what he thinks is going to work best here. We all agree this is important to get things done right. We want to see equity happen, and we want to be successful, but we also need to maintain a sense of urgency. So I think we recognize that's our role here as board members, and certainly for the Equity and Excellence Committee, to keep a sense of urgency about this work that we're doing. Toward that end, Scott did propose making equity- Toward that end, Scott did propose making equity more of a directive and not just an initiative enforced during a sense of urgency amongst the staff. We also discussed another reference here that we noted was that there are a couple of club names, which I believe are new, that have references to cultural or racial identity, and that opened up a discussion about a previous communication that we, that may have been given to other student groups, saying that they could not use racial or ethnic group names in their clubs. So we did want to get some clarity on that, since the meeting Scott, or at the meeting, Scott did say that as far as he knew, there was no directive against using a racial or ethnic identity in a group name. We talked about the importance of that for students in a mixed-race school at this point in their life, they're forming their identities. Psychologically, it's important for them to be able to have that source of support. So we all agreed with that, on that, and Scott did confirm that clubs are allowed to have that reference in their names and that would be communicated uniformly to all students. We also talked about the digital homework divide and the policy language in there that policy committee added, which I don't have to go over, I know, Ann, you talked about that, but we did review it. We love the new paragraphs that are proposed to be added. I will skip through that. And again, we just, to reinforce, we talked about it, this being a Band-Aid, the wording, to address our current inequities, but certainly not a permanent solution. The, Scott did share an anecdote, which I will share here, of its middle school teacher who approached him about the district pursuing a one-to-one computer program, laptop program to ensure all students are taking advantage of the technology tools. He appreciated this teacher's concern, but unfortunately had to discuss the lack of funding for such a program. The same teacher did distribute an anonymous survey to the students in all of his classes, and he found that only a couple of students did not have access in their home, internet access in their homes, and he is currently providing printed alternatives to all those students. That is one teacher, although the directive was communicated to all teachers, we did discuss the fact that there still seems to be no sense of understanding as to how widespread that particular directive is being implemented. So again, Scott's following up on that as well, because we liked the way that he distributed the survey anonymously and very discreet way and didn't call students out and make anyone feel like they were being singled out. The next item on our discussion was increasing parental awareness about honors and AP course waiver option. Currently, the waiver option is being presented so that all parents or students are aware, not just those who approach guidance or staff. That was our question, are all students and parents being made aware? Some of us recall that the waiver option is included in the initial letter that parents and guardians, guardians get regarding their child's course placement, but Scott will get clarity on this because there seems to be some gaps and holes in communication in that area. Mrs. Golden Cooper and Ms. Middleton have discussed holding informational parent meetings to help create awareness about the effort to increase participation in, among underrepresented students in those classes. And these meetings could also be an opportunity to talk about the waiver options so that more parents are aware of it. The next item was the middle school to high school pipeline, which I know curriculum also touched on. I just love the way all these committees kind of have overlap and we're really hitting on all these areas from multiple directions. But again, just talking about the importance of making sure that we don't have too many kids slipping through the cracks where they shouldn't be. One thing I will add to that discussion, because I'm not sure if it was mentioned in curriculum meeting, that Ms. Middleton will be attending grade-level team meetings for seventh to ninth graders, seventh to ninth grade class team meetings in February to identify students who may not be targeted for honors or the AP track. So both Mrs. Middleton and Ms. Golden Cooper are kind of working jointly on this effort and they'll be meeting again after the winter break, so Scott will update our committee at that point. We also acknowledge the need, or Scott acknowledged the need to hold Scott's staff accountable for the district's complaints around equity in all areas, from culturally competent teaching and instruction to promoting high expectations. A couple of the ideas that we discussed included, including measures of culturally responsive teaching and staff observations, creating target goals regarding increased honors and AP participation, such as a specific percentage or a number increase. And then we also talked about tying this into the middle school state's accreditation report and comprehensive equity plan requirements, which do require quantitative and areas of reporting around equity. And that is it. Our next meeting we will have in the end of January.
All right, anybody have any questions for?
Monique, I had a quick question. The teacher who did an informal survey and found only a couple of students without computers at home, do we have a sense of how many students were actually surveyed? You know, does this teacher have 200 students or?
I think he has all of the eighth graders.
Is it all, everyone in eighth grade?
I believe every, oh.
Is that, I don't, are we talking about the same teacher?
I think we are because we heard the same, I heard the same anecdote and I believe I know the teacher was, yeah.
So this is a hundred or 120 students?
Right, right, it's a good size.
Okay, so that, I just like to get some number, you know, some feel for, for, you know, what we're talking about, because we've been discussing this homework issue so much and we still, you know, we don't have the feel and the number, you know, who doesn't have? Be really good to know. That's all, thank you. Great report.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Thank you so much, Monique. Okay, so we will then move on to public comment. Mr. Presti, now's your time. Got anything for us?
Nothing, not a thing. I don't have anything tonight for my president's report. Scott, you had something you wanted to chat with us about for old business?
Well, I really don't have much to talk about. I do want to share the information that John Gardner and Dr. Nikosia put together, one, two, three, four, five, and send around what is also in digital format on the board drive. The students are getting this for the first time. And ask that if anyone has questions between now and next week, you email me and I'll obtain the answers if I can't get them to you right away from John and Christina. Zayu, this was, this is a topic I know that is dear to you, I mean, you brought it up. I would just ask that you look at it between now and Monday and then send me an email if you have any questions after you have a chance to look at it. You see the basic chart on the front that gives you a visual conception of how our network is set up, but then there is a punch list of needs on the second, third, and fourth page, second, third page, okay?
Scott, as the, as the finance committee said, the, I mean, this, this report is really excellent, so thank you. And I would only ask that we have an idea for the upcoming budget on the kind of costs associated with it, because we clearly need it. The question is how to roll it out.
Speaking of technology and John, I just have to call him out for something since he's here in our presence. If you may have noticed, the audio is better, the audio quality, I know I've noticed because I struggle to hear you guys sometimes. Apparently John tweaked the amp and that little tweak has helped, so thank you. You've already made a positive impact on the quality of life here at Highland Park Schools.
So when my grandkids visit and I want to show them that grandpa is on television, they can actually, they can actually hear the, they can actually hear the sound, sound as it comes.
Next step, he's going to have split screens and lots of other things in mind.
All right, great. I look forward to reading and not understanding a word in this report.
This is very good.
Okay, new business, let's see, do we have, ah, yes, our annual board calendar of meetings. Ah, here we go.
I'm passing around a draft that Susan Adada and I put together. I have an email into Rabbi Daniel at RPRY and Ruth, Rabbi Ruth, to get back to me and make sure there are no conflicts with Jewish holidays. My cursory look says we're good, looks good for now, but I want the experts to get back to me on that too.
All right, anybody have any initial impressions, just taking a peek? We're sticking with our one meeting per month over the summer.
Oh, do the student reps come to the summer ones? I'm sorry.
Yes, no, you don't.
Just you, are you?
Not after you graduate.
Just because you asked.
Only if you want to. Because you'll miss us so much by then. All right, so everybody will get a chance to give it a look, you know, make sure we're not.
Mine looks good here.
I checked, no family birthdays on my end, so.
I just wanted to check with like the spring break, because I know that, I don't know, I was trying to look it up on my phone, I didn't put it into my calendar. Does anyone know when spring break?
I'm assuming this straddles spring break because we have a two-week gap there, if you notice. So I'm assuming spring break, spring break is in the middle there and.
Yeah, that was the only thing I was, I was thinking.
Right, I'm assuming you avoided spring break. Yes.
Or not like the day after returning. I was just thinking, you know, for spring break, people travel and other things.
Usually we have that Monday off, which was, would be why we'd have the two weeks.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're usually, Easter Monday is off.
And you'll notice I avoided all Ironman triathlon weekends and, so I'm not going to cut.
Very clever. All right, so if nobody has anything, does anybody else have anything for new business? Nope. Is that it? Are we really done? Scott, you're, or Scott, Keith, you're sure you still don't want to talk about anything? He's still good. All right, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.